Mr. Wilson, you're muted.
Yeah. Good evening. Welcome to the City of Laurel Planning Commission, the 618th meeting, Tuesday, December 9th, 2025. Ms. Quillen, if you'll call the roll.
Council President Brenzis. Mr. Welford.
Here.
Mr. Grant.
Here.
Mr. Spalding.
Here.
Mr. Kish. Mr. Smith. Chairman Wilson.
Here.
You have a call.
Thank you very much. And I hope you have had a chance to take a look at the minutes from our previous meeting of September 9th. If you have and don't have any changes, I'll take a motion.
Mr. Chairman, this is Bill Welford. I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes from the September 9th, 2025 meeting as received from staff. No changes.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Dennis Grant seconds it.
Thank you, Mr. Grant. Brooke, please call the vote.
Mr. Welford.
Yes.
Mr. Grant.
Yes.
Mr. Spalding.
Yes.
Chairman Wilson.
Yes, and thank you. Thanks again for the hard work on getting those done and out to us. We appreciate it. Before we move into the rest of the agenda, we have a new director of ECD here in Laurel, Mr. Jay. I think it's pronounced Me She, I believe you said it. And if you'd like to say a few words, we welcome you to the city. We welcome you to the Planning Commission. Jay?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You are correct. It's pronounced Me She, like the words me and she together. Me She. But I do answer to most anything. I am excited to be here. If you had asked me to draw up an ideal job description, this ECD director role pretty much would have been it. The municipality size of 30,000 people, the apartment size, you know, eight of us, all of it, I think is just so exciting. And I'm really happy to be here and excited. And so that you know, by the way, we are interviewing candidates this week for the vacant planner position. So hopefully there will be someone new to meet you relatively soon as well. And then we will be up to the full complement that we're authorized for. But I am grateful to all of you for your service and to you, Chairman Wilson, for your kind words. I am as enthusiastic for all of you to be involved and engaged as you are to have me here. So I look forward to lots of productive and hopefully cordial meetings in our future together. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Me She. We appreciate it, and we appreciate you coming to come to Laurel. I know you came down from, I guess, previous job was up in Tany Town. So good sister city of ours. And we'll go ahead and move on to the next agenda item, which is special exception application number 972 for 13601 West Side Boulevard filed by West Side Land Holdings LLC. And this is for a recommendation to the Board of Appeals. Who's staffing this one?
Good evening, Mr. Chair, Commission Member and President Smith. This is Monte Burrow with ECD presenting staff report. On June the 2nd, 2025, ECD receives a special exception application by West Side Holding LLC for the property located at 13601 West Side Boulevard, Laurel Merlin 20707. The applicant is seeking a special exception approval to construct a fast food restaurant with a drive through. The property is on mixed-use transportation oriented. The property is currently vacant. The applicant is seeking a special exception to develop a 2,748 square foot Panda Express restaurant with drive-through service in the MXT zone. According to the site plan submitted, the application, the project includes a double drive-through lane. The proposed restaurant will be located on Lot 6, adjacent to the Wawa Gas Station within the West Side community. Previously, the site was approved for development of 200,000 square feet of commercial space. The West Side project includes 484 multifamily units, 137 townhomes, and additional commercial retail. The current application is intended to contribute to the redevelopment of the commercial retail space. The property recently had construction of a Starbucks and commercial strip center. The property was annexed in the city in July 2012. On October the 28th, 2025, staff sent a memorandum requesting comments to city departments, Law Department of Public Works, Department of Fire Marshal, and Permitting Service, Law Police Department. On October 28th, 2025, a memorandum was also sent to state agencies. All comments can be found in the staff report. The applicant acknowledged the comments and will make necessary revisions during the permitting process. On November 24, 2025, a letter explained the nature of the application and advised on the scheduled public hearing before the City of Laurel Planning Commission was sent by standard mail to all contingency property owners. On November the 26th, 2025, documentation was received by the applicant attesting that a zoning sign has been placed on the subject property, has remained, and shall remain until decision is reached by the Board of Appeals. Staff recommended the City of Laurel Planning Commission recommend approval of special exception number 972 to the City of Laurel Board of Appeals with the following conditions. One, the applicant should obtain all required electrical building permits from the City of Laurel Office of Fire Marshal and Permitting Service. The applicant shall comply with all state, federal, and local laws and regulations for the protection of the use of the property. The applicant shall submit plans to the Plan Review Department of Permitting Inspection Enforcement on their website for proposed food facility, apply online for health department food service facility permit through the Prince George's County website. During the demolition and construction phase of the project, no dust should be allowed to cross over property lines and impact adjacent properties. Indicated intent to conform to construction activity dust control requirements as specified in the 2011 Merlin Standard and specification of soil erosion and sediment control. Lastly, number five, no building permit shall be issued unless and until Lot 1 has been re-subdivided into Lots 5 and 6, and lots have been recorded among the land records of the Prince George's County. That concludes the reading of my report. Mr. Chair, the applicant, and staff are available for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Burrow. I appreciate it. Let me open it up to the members. Mr. Grant, do you have any questions?
Not this time, no.
Mr. Spalding, any questions?
No, I do not have any questions. Thank you.
Mr. Welford, any questions?
No questions. Thank you.
I don't have any questions either. I saw Mr. Gibbs on the line here. If he'd like to say a few words, if that would be great.
Yes. Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the Planning Commission. Edward Gibbs, Attorney with Offices in Largo. And I'm pleased to be here this evening representing West Side Land Holdings LLC. And that is a limited liability company organized and controlled by Strip Matter Land, the master developer of the entire West Side project. Of course, I've been before you on many cases over many years with regard to this project, and it's been a pleasure to be part of it and to bring this to the City of Laurel. I would like to say, just in as quickly as I can, you know, this property, as Mr. Burrow mentioned, is zoned MXT, mixed-use transportation oriented. And we had a mix of multifamily townhomes and the commercial component, which now it did consist of four lots, 1, 2, 3, and 4. Lot 1 was located in the northeast quadrant of the intersection of Van Duzen Road and Conterra Drive. And originally, it was slightly greater than two acres in size. We had originally hoped to get a pharmacy to come in there, and we worked on it for years and just weren't able to accomplish it. We were very happy, my client was very happy, and considered himself fortunate to be able to attract the Panda Express. It's a unique restaurant with a unique menu, which we think is going to be very successful. To the point of the conditions of the staff report, the final condition was to subdivide, this was Lot 1, to subdivide Lot 1 into Lots 5 and 6. That has been accomplished. And that preliminary subdivision plan has been approved and recorded in the land records in Prince George's County. And so this project is now on Lot 6, which is 0.94 acres. And that's what we specify will be the acreage for this particular use. So we have already met condition number five, but I'll be happy to file a copy of the recorded final plan of subdivision, just to clarify that. The, you know, the MXT requires a conceptual site plan, preliminary plan, and final site plans. And of course, we had a conceptual site plan for the entire project. We have preliminary subdivision plans for the entire project. And this, this use required a final site plan. And that final site plan was approved by you, the Planning Commission, as in June of 2025, this year earlier. And so that part is behind us. The Panda Express restaurant use was analyzed as part of that final site plan process. But we required also a special exception, and that's, of course, what's before you tonight for recommendation to the Board of Appeals. We have no objection to any of the conditions recommended in the staff report. We appreciate the work that went into preparing the staff report. We agree with the staff report in virtually every respect, save one. And that would be the criteria. So the staff report analyzes the general special exception criteria, because this is a use permitted only by special exception. And those general criteria are found in section 20-21.01 of your Unified Land Development Code. We agree with the staff's analysis of compliance with each of those criteria. However, the staff report goes on and continues to analyze the case as a quote "drive-in, carry-out, or fast food restaurant pursuant to section 20-22.31 of the Unified Land Development Code." And that seems to be the most obvious analysis section for this type of restaurant. But that category, that specific generic, excuse me, non-genetic, I guess, is a better way to describe it, but that specific use only is permitted in the CG and CSH zones. And we confronted this issue when we first started the development of West Side, because we have a Starbucks, which is a similar restaurant with a drive-through service, and there's a Chipotle, similar drive-through restaurant. And those were filed, and this one was filed as well, as the use that is permitted under the MXT zone. And that is called a restaurant dash specialty with drive-through. So it's a specialty restaurant with drive-through, and that's permitted by section 20-12.2. And that's what we analyzed in our justification statement. That's what we have analyzed in prior restaurants of this nature that are found in West Side. And that is the appropriate section to quote. Now, there are no special criteria for that particular use. You just have to satisfy the general special exception criteria, which staff has analyzed. So there's nothing further to be added. But I just, I just wanted to make that clarification for purposes of the record. But with that being said, we agree with all the other criteria. And quite frankly, if the section cited by staff were applicable, we conform to that as well. But it's, it's just not the correct section to be used for this type of restaurant, because it doesn't permit that use in the MXT zone. But with that being said, we appreciate always being in front of you. We appreciate working with the City of Laurel and your staff members. And I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Gibbs. I appreciate it. Mr. Burrow, do we need to change anything in the staff report? Or can we accept it as Mr. Gibbs suggested? I just want to make sure we have whatever we need in the record for the future.
Yeah, I believe we can accept it the way it is. And then in the future, we make sure that notation is taken, okay, just as Mr. Gibbs explained.
Okay, so we have Mr. Gibbs recording, and it'll go into the minutes if that's amenable to you, Mr. Gibbs.
Absolutely.
Yeah. And if we don't have any other, let me open it up. Does anybody on the commission have any questions for Mr. Gibbs?
Chairman Wilson, I have, Bill Welford, and I have just one, one question from my own information to Mr. Gibbs. So with the two drive-throughs that are there now, can you speak to how they are working so far with the traffic flow? And with this one being a dual-lane drive-through, do you know if that would present any challenges to drivers that are now using a total of four drive-throughs within the area there?
Right. Well, first of all, I will say this. Mr. Blake Escherick, who is one of the ownership team, he's on with us this evening, and he could speak to whether there have been any problems that he is aware of. I am not aware of any. I've visited the site on many occasions. And in terms of circulation for the restaurants out there today, every time I've been there, it's been smooth flowing. And, and actually, in this instance, the double drive-through Commissioner Welford is really, is very helpful, because it allows more cars to get in the queue, thus eliminating stacking that occurs outside of the drive-through and creating a problem. And so I think, I think that would be better. Mr. Lenhardt, our traffic engineer, could certainly respond to that if you would like further explanation, as could Mr. Escherick relative to how they're functioning right now.
I'm satisfied with your response. And I do know that the two Chick-fil-A's in the area recently changed from one lane to two lanes. And that does work out better. When it first came up, I didn't understand how they could even fit another lane in there. But both of our local Chick-fil-A's do very well with two lanes. So I am satisfied with your, your answer to that. I just wanted to make sure that was being checked into.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Welford. Mr. Grant, any questions of the applicant?
No, not this time.
Mr. Spalding?
I do not have any questions at this time.
Thank you. I will take a motion if everybody's ready.
Mr. Chairman, it's Bill Welford. I would make a motion for the special exception application number 972 for 13601 West Side Boulevard filed by West Side Land Holdings LLC for recommendation to the Board of Appeals.
Thank you, Mr. Welford. Do we have a second?
Mr. Chair, Dennis Grant seconds it.
Thank you, Mr. Grant. Ms. Quillen, please call the roll.
Mr. Welford.
Yes.
Mr. Grant.
Yes.
Mr. Spalding.
Yes.
Chairman Wilson.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much. And thank you, Mr. Gibbs. Always good to see you. And we're looking forward to the Panda Express.
Yeah, there we go. And thank you very much, Commissioner Wilson, Mr. Chairman. Always a pleasure to appear before you and certainly appreciate the opportunity to be associated with this project at West Side. Thank you very much.
Good luck to you. Thank you, sir. Yep.
Thank you.
Moving on to agenda item number four, which is a special exception application number 976-14600 Laurel Place filed by Fidel Finncon, I believe it's pronounced, for recommendation by the Board of Appeals. Mr. Burrow?
Good evening again, Mr. Chair, Commission Member, and President Smith. This is Monte Burrow with ECD presenting the staff report. On October the 28th, 2025, ECD receives a special exception application by Fidel Rickon for the property located at 14600 Laurel Place, Laurel Merlin 20707. The applicant is seeking special exception approval to have live entertainment, a DJ in a small van. Cheetos Tex Mex and Grill Restaurant currently operates on this property. The applicant proposes the following hours of entertainment. Friday, 9:00 PM to 1:00 AM. Saturday, 9:00 PM to 1:00 AM. Operational measures, DJ will perform exclusively inside the designated bar area to minimize external noise. Volume levels will be actively monitored to avoid disruption to nearby businesses and residents. Surveillance cameras are installed throughout the premises to ensure safety and maintain accountability. The applicant will employ security officers, including off-duty law police personnel, who will be on-site during entertainment hours to ensure the safety of guests and staff on entertainment nights. The following are duties and assignments of the security personnel. Monitoring entrances and exits, checking IDs, ensuring underage patrons do not access restricted areas, reporting intoxicated, unruly guests to public officials, directly enforcing parking policies, surveillance of property for suspicious activity, notifying public safety official if a crime is committed or if public safety support is needed. And lastly, prevent criminal activity by constant foot and mobile patrol. The Law Police Department and Fire Marshal will be consulted to ensure all public safety measures are in place. On October the 30th, 2025, a staff sent a memorandum requesting comments from city departments, Law Department of Public Works, Department of Fire Marshal, and Permitting Services, Law Police Department, and Parks and Rec. Also, on October 30th, 2025, a memorandum was also sent to state agency. All comments can be found in the staff report. The applicant has acknowledged the comments and will make necessary revisions during the permitting process. On November 24, 2025, a letter explained in the nature of the application and advised on the scheduled public hearing before the City of Laurel Planning Commission was sent by standard mail to all contingency property owners. On December 1st, 2025, documentation was received by the applicant attesting that a zoning sign has been placed on the property and has remained and shall remain until the decision is reached by the Board of Appeals. Staff recommends the City of Laurel Planning Commission recommend approval of special exception number 976 to the City of Laurel Board of Appeals with the following conditions. The applicant shall obtain all required City of Laurel permits. The applicant shall comply with all federal, state, and local laws and regulations related to the use of the property. The applicant shall adhere to the regulations set forth by the City of Laurel ordinance at all times of operation. Neither external speakers nor live or pre-recorded entertainment, nor any outdoor entertainment shall be permitted. The applicant shall adhere to the approved hours of operation of 9:00 PM to 1:00 AM on Fridays and Saturdays only unless this applicant is amended to reflect the different timeframes. Six, surveillance cameras throughout the premises shall remain installed and operational at all times. Seven, the following operation standards must be met by the use throughout its operation. All external doors remain closed but not locked during business hour. No external speakers will be used. The applicant will comply with all approved plans and city requirements. Any non-conformance with the special exception terms will be corrected promptly upon the notice from city staff. The applicant will comply with all applicable laws and ordinance of the City of Laurel or any other agency within jurisdiction. Security personnel shall be on duty upon the premises during all hours of live entertainment for the purpose of A, monitoring entrances and exits, checking IDs to ensure underage patrons do not access restricted areas, reporting intoxicated, unruly guests to public officials, directing and enforcing parking policies, surveillance of property indoor and outdoor for suspicious activity, and lastly, notifying public safety official if a crime is committed or if public safety support is needed. Mr. Chair, that concludes my reading of my report. The applicant and staff is available for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Burrow. Let me go around. Mr. Grant, any questions of staff?
No, not this time.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Spalding?
No questions at this time.
Mr. Welford?
No, all questions were thoroughly answered in the planning department's report and with all the conditions previously mentioned. Thank you.
Thank you. Council President?
I'm fine with it. It sounds like a great thing for that restaurant. They do very well. And it would be nice for the, I think, for the community here that actually frequents that establishment. So no comment.
Thank you. If there's no questions of staff, I know there's an applicant here, but I don't think we have any questions for him. Does anybody have any questions for the applicant? Would the applicant like to say anything?
Hello, yes, commissioners. My name is Victor. I'm the GM at CHIO. And the idea of the DEA is, you know, to bring a little bit of extra sauce to a restaurant and to do something different to the City of Laurel. So that's why we are trying to have a GEA at CHIO's Texas restaurant. It'll only be on the weekends.
Thank you very much. If there's no additional questions, I will take a motion.
Mr. Chairman, Bill Welford, I'll make a motion for the special exception application number 976. I'll make a motion for the special exception application number nine seven-six for fourteen six hundred Laurel Place filed by Fidel Fincon for recommendation to the Board of Appeals.
Thank you, Mr. Welford. Do I have a second?
I second that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Spalding. Ms. Quillen, please call the roll.
Mr. Welford?
Yes.
Mr. Spalding?
Yes.
Mr. Grant?
Yes.
Chairman Wilson?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Ms. Quillen. Thank you very much to Cheetos, and we're looking forward to you having music there on the weekends.
Thank you very much for your support. We appreciate it.
Thank you. We have agenda number five and six, which is nominations for the Chair and Vice Chair. Mr., let me open it up to the floor, if anybody would like to nominate anybody.
Mr. Chairman, Bill Welford, I'd like to nominate Chairman Wilson to continue your good work through two thousand and twenty-six.
Thank you, Mr. Welford. Is there a second for the nomination?
I will second that. Dennis will second that.
Thank you, Mr. Grant. I appreciate it. Ms. Quillen, please call the roll.
Mr. Welford?
Yes.
Mr. Grant?
Yes.
Mr. Spalding?
Yes.
Chairman Wilson?
I concur. I will be happy to serve another one. You guys make it easy. Let me go to nominations for Vice Chair.
Mr. Wilson, I mean Chairman Wilson, Bill Welford again, I'll nominate for Vice Chair. I did hear from Mr. Kiss earlier today, and he declined nomination for the Vice Chair for this year coming up. So I'd like to nominate Mr. Dennis Grant as the Vice Chair for two thousand and twenty-six.
I think that's an excellent choice. Do we have a second, Mr. Spalding?
I second Mr. Grant.
Thank you very much. Mr. Grant, are you willing to serve?
Yes, certainly I will, to the best of my ability.
That's wonderful. Ms. Quillen, please call the roll.
Mr. Welford?
Yes.
Mr. Spalding?
Yes.
Mr. Grant?
Yes.
Chairman Wilson?
I wholeheartedly say yes, and I appreciate everybody's hard work on this committee. Wish everybody a happy holiday season coming up. I think the mayor's Christmas party is Thursday. Is that right? Do I have that right?
You are correct. It is on Thursday night, and you will have an opportunity to see me serving something or possibly DJing.
Oh, that's great. Well, everybody have a great one, and we'll see you, if not Thursday night, we'll see you around town.
No worries. Sure.
And and if there's no other business to come from this, I move that we adjourn.
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas, everybody.
Christmas.